Okay, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Town of Bluff Planning and Zoning Commission Regular Meeting. Tonight is Wednesday, November 6, 2024. The time is 6:03 PM. We are meeting virtually. We'll start with roll call for Planning and Zoning Commissioners. This is Amanda Podmore, Chair.
Marcia Haydenfeld.
Good morning.
Brian Whitney.
Malia Collins.
Great, welcome. And then Town Council?
Luanne Hook.
Thanks, Luanne. All right, and thanks Craig for being here. Okay, so we have three sets of minutes to approve tonight. I will start, we'll go backwards, most recent in order from October 30th. Malia, are you good to share a screen? For that? Okay.
This was our regular meeting minutes.
Well, maybe it's not October 30th. Here's October 16th.
Oh, no problem.
So. Looks like this was a question excused.
So yeah, change that to excused. Then Marcia had a couple just small kind of grammatical changes to Section 2. And I think that was.
I like them.
Yeah, anything else from folks?
I think you missed one or two. Let's see. Maybe not, okay.
Those are all the comments that I see.
Wait, go down one more time for just a second. I'm sorry. Maybe this wasn't the one, okay. I did, there were just some language things and maybe it was the other one. That's fine, whatever we got, we got.
Perfect.
I make a motion, I make a motion to approve the minutes of October 16th as amended.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Aye, okay, motion approved. Thanks, everybody. Malia, which one would you like to go to next?
Hi, so many windows open. I'm gonna stop sharing. The next one up is. Drumroll, 10:40.
Okay, so this was. This was our joint work session. We, and so thank you, Marcia, you put in some more substantive kind of rephrasing of the first paragraph. I think for the record, I'll just read that whole first paragraph as you've edited it. So Chair Podmore began discussion of the RV ordinance by explaining the reasoning behind developing the ordinance. Commissioner Haydenfeld described how they began developing the ordinance and how they tailored the template they started with to the working draft that was presented today. The commission began by reading through each of the sections of the draft, which started with the stated intention of the ordinance and definition of the terms used throughout. The commissioners asked council for input on how the commission should address non-conforming use and the nature of non-conforming use being grandfathered into compliance. The discussion centered on allowing or not allowing for non-conforming use and the impact the choice would have on the community. The discussion continued with the council and commission considering tourist RV parking in town on streets and what options the town had for managing that situation. Everybody good with those changes in that paragraph?
Yeah, that's beautiful.
Nice. Okay, and then the next paragraph, Marcia changed the word amendments to adjustments to read. At this point, the council and commission decided it would be in the public's best interest if the adjustments discussed today were added to the RV ordinance before it was released to the public.
I didn't want the word amendments because it sounded like we were actually changing wording and when in fact this is a draft and we're making adjustments.
Agreed, yeah, that sounds great.
I like it.
And then. Then just two other like sort of non-substantive changes. Any further comments or changes in here?
Looks good. I motion to approve. Minutes from October 4th.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All right, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Aye, okay, motion passes unanimously, thank you. Then last, we'll turn to the 10:30 regular, nope, 10:30 work session. Work session, yep. So Section 1, there's a like non-sub. There was an edit to make it clear that we were talking about zoning sections. In Section 2, the last sentence is changed to read, but Council Representative Hook was only able to confirm that Mayor Lepinon would be drafting those ordinances and that they would be included if prepared in time for the hearing. Good, good change there. I think that was it. Any other additions to this one?
Look like it. I motion to approve the Planning and Zoning Work Session Minutes from October 30th. It's revision.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All right, all in favor of the motion, say.
Aye.
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 All right, third round of minutes approved unanimously. Thanks, everybody. Okay, so to dive into our agenda today. Old business, we will go over updates from Town Council, find a look at the draft subdivision ordinance and final look at the draft RV ordinance. Then under new business, second half of the meeting is when we will do, conduct Planning and Zoning Commissioner interviews and talk about schedule for next year. It's kind of a simple agenda. Marcia, go ahead.
Yes, Ms. Madam Chair, we forgot open public comments.
Oh.
And it's gone there. None of us caught it, but it's not on there.
Thank you for checking that. I'll go ahead and open that public comment section now. So I will open public comments. If folks would like to give a comment up to three minutes in length, please, no. Okay, I will close public comment. Thank you, Marcia, for reminding us. So let's move on. Item 1, old business update from Town Council, from Luanne.
Okay, there we go. I think I'm muted now, but yes. The last time I gave you an update was October 16th. And since then, we've had a special meeting on the 29th, which included a closed session. And then we had one yesterday, November 5th. So it's a combination of things that we've done. We have voted to change IT services from Netforce to Galaxy IT and that will get the .gov address put in and more security and whatnot that Erin, the manager, was really pushing for and getting that all up to qualifications and stuff or requirements. So that's happening now. Bluff Water Works Strategic Planning Meetings have begun. The next meeting is still to be determined, not sure the date of it. Bluff Water Works also did the water line inventory with Sunrise that was a required unit. So that was accomplished. In the strategic plan, it was emphasized that the town is following the strategic plan that we put into place, that we paid for and they strategized on, so. There are three from Town Council. It's always posted that there's a meeting, but they don't make any decisions, but they do get questions and that's what they're following is a strategic plan. On the old school DRC, there's still no movement on the architect from UDB. They're still behind on invoices. So that's, that's still in a holding pattern. The Blanding folks did do the marathon, used to be the Huff to Bluff, now it's the Bears Ears Marathon. That was, seemed to be a good success. I know that people in town here helped to set things up and take care of runners and whatnot. The ballot box was here, that seemed to work also. Thanks to everybody who manned it so that it could be protected. The noise ordinance, there was not enough time to draft it. The mayor, from the mayor, she said there was not enough time, so it will have to be put on the next round. And then, as you mentioned earlier, we no longer have a bookkeeper or a note taker. They'll be advertising that. There was a resignation on her part. And that is all that I have for tonight. Does anybody have questions?
Sounds good, thank you.
Yeah, the, I guess with Bluff Water Works, the water line inventory, was that, did that produce like a map that the town now has access to?
I have not seen a map. I'm not sure that Sunrise has given back any of the information yet. There was some other information, just like the report. That hasn't been returned to Sunrise, but it was accepted that they'd done it. And that, it had to do with lead and pipes and that kind of thing, so.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Don't we already have a map? I thought we had a map.
They have a map, yeah.
Okay. Okay, any other questions for Luanne? Okay, thanks. Then we can move on to Item 2, Final Review of the Draft Subdivision Ordinance from the Hanson Group. So Malia's pulling that up as a reminder to the public. We are updating our subdivision ordinance per requirements in the Utah, from the Utah Legislature across the state that folks update their subdivision ordinances. And so the Hanson Group is providing that service to us and paid for by the state. We are at the final draft stage, likely ready for public hearing, so. Did, let's just scroll till we have some comments in there. Okay, so this section.
Amanda, one second. I thought there was one at the very top for me, but I don't see it. So can we go back to the top for one second? I'm so sorry, it just. I thought I put one under the general.
Under general?
Oh, no, never mind, general under.
3.2.
No, I saw my name below, so I know it's the right one. I'm wrong, it was later. Go on, please, excuse my interruption.
No problem.
Okay, so this was a section on page 6 in which they're talking about boundary line adjustments and they had somehow deleted some text from the original version. So Marcia had put in a flag, said what. I went back and read, so that it should read boundary line agreement between two owners.
Oh, if not, yeah.
Dwelling lot or housing unit is created and they just will not violate any applicable laws, so.
Great, great. Take out my what and leave her words in there.
Yeah, I think we can accept all those changes.
Thank you for catching that.
Yeah.
Or answering that. Okay.
Love a good table.
Love a good table. So then we changed throughout the document clerk to manager.
Okay, good, because I caught it somewhere else too.
Nice.
There you go, clerk to manager, good. Thank you.
Okay, so this is saying things that are required for a subdivision application. And under this Section 3 Studies and Reports, B is a soils report. Or B is a water report, C is a soils report. Marcia was asking, are these for all applications? We don't have designated hazardous areas. So I was wondering if we should put language saying unless like waived by the commission or something? I'm curious what folks think about that.
If I might, I think, I, I think we could say that, but my question comes more from, do we have the right to ask for it if we have no designation to prove the ask? Meaning, if you said to someone, you're about to build at the top of the hill, we want to see a report on the soils that ask whether your house can stand up at the, you know, on the top of the hill. We could ask that, but we haven't marked that hill as a hazardous area. So I'm just making sure, I mean, I want to ask, I want to be able to say, hey, you're on the top of the hill, show us that the soil will hold. And I think that's reasonable. So just the question is, is are we allowed to say that even though we haven't designated the hill as hazardous?
My sense is from when we were talking to Jacob about this section, he was, he was like, you can put what requirements you want in there. So my sense from him is that that's allowed.
Okay, so therefore I do agree with you that we should say as required or waived by P&amp;Z. Or whichever, as required.
So.
And then get rid of my question, yeah. Does that do it? Let's see.
And do we want to do it for B too? Do you want to do it for all those?
Well, yeah, maybe we do. Maybe it's studies and reports and put the new line you typed, put it up under the words studies as as required away by Planning and Zoning Commission right there, yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, there you go. Well, actually, A belongs to you, not to us. Well, it could belong to us, though, if we didn't. Yeah, just do that.
Yeah, I like that.
Yep, cool, good catch.
Nice, I like that.
Okay. Further down, there's one. This just caught my eye. If you say that you can, notwithstanding subsection blah blah, minor subdivisions are not permitted unless all lots front on a platted and dedicated public street. So that doesn't mean it's the existing street. It could mean that you're plating and going to build the new street, right? I just don't want someone to say, well, wait a minute, I'm not meeting the existing street, I'm building the street. Right? Are we okay with that, that the way it's worded? Or do we need to put platted and dedicated existing or planned street?
Might be pertinent in our town to have planned.
Yeah, maybe we should clarify that.
Seems like roads are sometimes made and blow.
Plan, so planned or existing?
Front of platted and dedicated plunder existing public street, there you go. So if they build a subdivision off of Mulberry, they got Mulberry. If they build a subdivision over by the farm, they got to build a road in front of it, you know, to it. Okay.
Yeah.
Cool.
Nice catch.
Yeah.
Sound effects are good. Town of Bluff, I just caught one of the ones that they did, that they didn't touch. Okay. Do we have a standard? Oh, that was interesting. State, I mean, dirt roads do have standards. Dirt roads are called dirt road or they're called.
Yeah.
What's the other, you know, well, that, I don't remember my class names correctly for that. What I want to know is, don't we want to say street grading and surfacing to, even if dirt roads, to permit dirt roads even. All roads must come up to compliance of, of, you know, Bluff Road Standards. So when they say that P&amp;Z can waive this to permit dirt roads, doesn't mean we just can let them, you know, bulldoze a piece of dirt and call it a road.
Right.
So I just want to be able to say. Go ahead.
What if we just removed the to permit dirt roads? It was just street grading and surfacing, except to the extent waived by planning and zoning? Or would it be waived by the Roads Committee?
I was just wondering, could we run this sentence by the Roads Committee?
Maybe that's a good way to do it, Amanda, because they can remind us what we do have. So that's, yeah, put it right there, exactly.
Okay, I will do that tomorrow.
Okay, that's great, because I'm just looking for clarification that it's not just one of those bulldozer goes by and calls it a road. Okay.
Thanks, Amanda, thanks, Marcia.
Yep, no, we're good. I read this very quickly today and I'm not, I'm not promising I got it all.
It's the beauty of public comment is that we have more chances. All right, end of this document, other than that one comment to run by Roads.
Yep, I like that. I like that we got that far. Okay.
All right.
So pending language suggestion from the Roads Committee, do we feel comfortable moving to bring this to public hearing?
I make a motion that we submit this draft after clarification of the Roads language to the Town Council for public hearing and next steps of approval of process.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Only that we're very grateful that this was written for us.
Amen, Bryant.
Yeah, agreed. Okay, I'll bring it to, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Great, all right, motion approved. So I will send that to Roads Committee. Work on getting that posted on the website and then I will just let the Hanson Group know the latest. Just making some notes.
And you'll be working with Erin to do public hearing posts and all that good stuff?
Yeah.
She said going, uh-oh, that's a lot, but having lost Melanie, I think we need to make sure that someone's. Yeah.
Yeah, I can, I know, that's on me, so, okay.
And I, Amanda, I can always help if you need to give me a call, so.
Oh, thanks. Okay, RV ordinance, Marcia and Malia, would you like to lead this one final time?
Oh, my gosh.
Yes.
Go, go, Malia.
So I put together our zone regulations table, basically based on what we had talked about in our below sections. I'll get back up there to that. And as you'll, as you've probably seen as you were reviewing this, that I erased a lot of things. And so I'd like to talk about maybe not even having Sections 4 and 5, just everything being here under standards applicable to all zones. So just kind of a forefront of that. So I put this beautiful table together for our zone regulations and our RV and THOW, mobile home, RV park, mobile home park on the top. And then on our column going down, we have our different zones. And so I guess we'll just go ahead and read through it together because this is, there are just some questions with it that I have. Let me know if screen doesn't work for you guys. I am trying to also see you on the Zoom at the same time, so.
Looking good. And, Emilia, I'll just let you know that I did a tiny bit of just like editing in it. So not, I didn't make any substantive changes.
I saw that, I liked them, thank you. Appreciate the help. So this first one is for agriculture, agricultural A1. I have written none for RVs and THOWs, mobile home, RV parks and mobile home parks because I actually pulled up our zoning code and A1, I actually pulled up on another screen, is open space, green space, public parks, public land cemetery and public restroom facilities. So none of that really makes any sense to put in conjunction with an RV park, mobile home park, RV and THOW or mobile home. My question that I have off to the side is, do we leave it blank or do we actually write none?
I like where you write none so that people know that it wasn't left blank unintentionally. And it also emphasizes that we don't want stuff there.
Okay. I'll approve that.
And Malia, thank you. I love that you turned it sideways from when you and I saw it the other day.
I was like, why does this not look right? And I was like, oh, my gosh, turn your table on its side.
We got it, we got it, it's beautiful.
So moving down to agricultural A2. I'll go ahead and read, it's allowed uses and then as you guys are reading, looking at this as well. So allowed uses in A2 are all uses in A1 and agriculture, silviculture, ranching, farming, including the raising of domestic animals, the growing of crops, orchards or forage and all necessary or incidental agricultural structures, single-family dwellings, accessory dwelling units and accessory structures. And so in the RV ordinance, I have RV and THOWs, we can have two per three acres as a long-term residence, satellite bedroom or rental and/or short-term rental with a valid permit. And then mobile homes, same thing. And then RV parks, so where I start, what I found with reading our zoning code, thank you, Luanne, for reminding us to check that, is our, what kind of changes here is our minimum lot size between our different zones. So A2 has a minimum lot size of three acres and a maximum dwelling density, including accessory dwelling units, two units per three acres. So therefore, I am just following along with that with our RVs and THOWs, two per three acres. And then for an RV park, it becomes an RV park once you have four per acre, but you have to have three acres. A lot of numbers here. It takes a little bit to think about. And so my comment over to the side is what I just read to you just so that we can continue remembering why we have these minimums. A question that Marcia and I kept on coming to was RV park, when does it become an RV park? Or when does it become that you just have multiple RVs on your land? And so, because I'm bringing this up, we actually adjusted our definition of RV park to make this work. And what we changed it to is many, it means any parcel or tract of land under the control of any person, organization or governmental entity wherein designated sites. It used to have a number, or wait, no, okay. Designated sites are offered for the use of the public or members of an organization by rent or lease, including park-owned recreational vehicles held out for rent. RV parks are primarily designed to accommodate recreational vehicles and camping. In that definition before, we had a specific number. And since it's different for each zone and if to each, yeah, for each zone, we just removed that and the numbers are actually here back in our chart. So.
And I think, and I think if I may, Malia, the rest of the sentence was, we're actually talking about RV park and mobile home parks as actual businesses. So, so they're businesses running these things. If you have two friends staying in your yard or you have two things in your yard that fit in your yard and you can do them or whatever, then that's not a business. So go ahead, Amanda.
So I, yeah, I see what you're saying here, that you'll put the numbers in the table. However, I'm a little wary of removing the previous language that said, I think it said if you're renting two or more, then that's an RV park. I think that definition is still helpful because that allowed us to, that allows us to look and see oh, if somebody is renting, like a person can rent one RV in their yard, that's cool. But if they're renting two or more, then that qualifies as an RV park and they need to have. I'm not sure if I'm just describing this well, but I think it was a good trigger for us. Hey, you're de facto operating an RV park in like a residential area or something.
Why, trust me, Amanda, we said this sentence over and over again. And that's why we're here at the meeting, so you guys can say the same sentence and see what you came up with.
Yeah. And what we actually came to was, if it's in a residential area, the question is, is it an STR or is it an RV park? And the question comes to by allowing, we'll get to this point back down in residential, but the question, it comes to, are we undermining short-term rental permits by allowing an RV park in a residential area? Because there is a certain number of short-term rental permits that have been given out already. already, and that's one of the things that.
If, if someone wants to rent some RVs in their backyard, they're going to have to be an RV park, because they don't necessarily have their STR license, and they won't get one in residential. So that factored into it is, is I think where Malia is going. It's definitely, it's definitely a sentence that goes in circles. I have two for rent. I have one STR. I know, so maybe let's move down in the chart a little, Amanda, and see if you can fill in numbers for us, because we agree with you. This is, this is a question.
I'm just reading, reading, I think, I think you're right, that it is, that my, my issue is addressed. So, okay, go ahead. Yeah.
No, no, we need you. Don't, don't give up.
I gave up last night.
Okay, so moving down to A3. So the big difference that you'll see between A2 and A3 is the size. So A3, I'm going to read again to you, what is allowed in A3, it's all those specified in A2, plus campgrounds, RV parks, and recreation facilities. So these are the things that we have already, or this is those, one of the spots that we've already said you can have in our RV park. And so we obviously need to allow it, because it's already said, but the density and lot size in A3 is a half an acre, minimum lot size, maximum density, including ADUs, is four units per one acre. And so, following that, two per half acre, with a minimum lot size of a half acre, just to kind of keep it consistent that we're here and there is the same. And with this one, oh, okay, okay, and four per acre, minimum lot size, half acre. Oh, gosh.
Yeah. So that, yeah, that makes sense.
That's, yeah, because it's just following current zoning code, just kind of defining it a little bit further. And this is what I just read to you. Moving along, commercial, so this was a note that I had made earlier, and I noticed that you commented on it, Amanda. So going down to commercial, C1, one per half acre may be used as a long-term residence, satellite bedroom, or rental, and short-term rental with valid permit. Friendly reminder of what's allowed in C1, automotive repair, light, motor vehicle fuel dispensing, retail sales, no outside storage, trading posts, galleries, offices, or professional services, daycare facilities, libraries, mortuary, or funeral homes, public buildings, or governmental service buildings, police, fire, EMS, et cetera, parks, places of worship, public utility facilities, restaurant, residential dwellings, or accessory dwellings. Minimum lot size, half acre. And so, where, for commercial, we're saying one per half acre. There is no maximum density in anything except for A2 and A3. So all of these commercial and residential don't have that maximum for dwelling density. So we get to decide it here. And so, Marsha and I came up with one per half acre for that long-term residence, satellite bedroom, for a mobile home as well. And then, you'll see this statement throughout the rest of our chart on mobile homes, mobile home parks, and RV parks for all the commercials. Density is based upon Town of Bluff zoning ordinance, including utility and septic limitations, which Amanda had a great statement for. Density determined by septic permit from San Juan Public Health. I like that.
I do, too. There's also the comment about temporary or construction, and Malia and I talked a lot about that. We want someone to be able to put, if they're building a commercial building, and they need to put some recreational, RVs, or modular mobile home neck on the land while they're doing all that, no problem. We want them to be able to do that. And then we're saying, but you can actually live there. So you can live in one per half acre. So you can't, you know, so that, that the, the question becomes, did they need to know that they could have another one there for part, you know, for part-time construction? How many? Did we care about part-time construction RVs? No, not necessarily. So, yeah, I don't know how.
That's addressed further down in, you can have one overnight.
For year use.
I think.
Yeah. Driveways, RV, didn't we say that was there? Oh, RV or lot where permanent dwelling is being constructed for a period of one year?
I just added that today. I took that language from somebody else. I thought it was nice language. The only thing is, it says for a permanent dwelling, which I, so do we want it?
Dwelling or, or business, or.
Okay, so maybe where I put structure, change or business.
Oh. Or business structure.
And so we should just put that, like, fix that sentence generally, but.
Perfect. Okay, so then, in that case, I'm going to remove temporary slash construction, because that answers that question. And if you guys would help me with wording, and I'll just copy and paste this all the way throughout, if we all agree that that's what we want. For RVs, mobile homes throughout. So, density is based upon Town of Bluff zoning ordinance and determined by septic from San Juan Public Health.
And septic permit from, yep. Density is determined by Town of Bluff zoning ordinance and septic permit from San Juan Public Health.
Yeah, should it, should be San Juan County Public Health Department? What's their full name?
Probably.
And today is determined by.
You can put DEP. Density is determined by Town of Bluff zoning ordinance and septic permit from San Juan County Health Permit. Well, wait a minute. Did we talk about the density of a, what is this? This is a mobile home, this is an RV park.
Yeah, this is an RV park.
Okay, so do we talk about densities?
So, what we've talked about in the past is, we don't want to tell people how to run their business. And so that's basically what we're attempting to do here is, your density is determined by the zoning ordinance, but also, I'm going to scroll, so close your eyes. We have our standards for the RV parks, and so that is telling you that you have to have these receptacles, you have to be within setbacks, you have to meet all the health and safety codes. If you want to have a laundrette, you can. You have to have some public open space. And so it's kind of defined down here, and if you want to put your lots one next to another without a lot of space between them, that's on you, if you want your business to be like that. Was kind of Marsha and I's discussion.
So therefore, density refers to meeting all the criteria below. So that is correct. The wording we're about to put in is correct.
And it's also, yeah, and we're still falling back on how much can you have on your septic permit? How big is your tank?
Yep. So density is determined by Town of Bluff zoning ordinance and septic permit, and this, and this ordinance.
Right.
So it's Town of Bluff ordinances, just take out the word zoning and say ordinances. Because the ordinance would be anything in this.
Yeah.
Density is determined by Town of, by Town of Bluff ordinances and septic per, septic availability, septic from San Juan Public Health, and septic approval.
Limitations.
Limit. Septic approval from San Juan County Public Health. There you go.
They do not have the word department in their name, as I scan their website.
Oh, thanks. I'm, uh, I'm still a little confused by us saying density is determined by Town of Bluff ordinances, because is that, if people are reading that, are they going to say, well, what's the density? I don't understand.
Yeah, I agree, I agree. The more I read it, the more I don't know where to look for what that means.
Yeah. Could.
How about density is determined by, by achieving setback and septic approvals? From.
Well, density is determined setbacks and and septic approval?
And septic limit, and, and septic limitations.
Yeah. Did I get it?
No, take out Town of Bluff ordinances. Density is determined by setback, setback measure, setback requirements, good, and septic approval from San Juan County Health. There we go. Is that better?
That looks great.
That's good.
Do we also need to say something in here about, I mean, I guess it's probably addressed below. You need to have a business license, and maybe this is where we say in commercial C1, if you have two that are being rented, then you need an RV park. Because we don't have that anywhere, since we took it out of the definition. So at this point, we say an RV park is two or more rented RV slash mobile homes in this one, because it's one. And so if you have two, you're now an RV park. Since we went to our, our chart here to determine when is it an RV park, because it's not anywhere else.
Agreed.
And then the same thing over here, a mobile home park is two or more rented mobile homes. Yay, nay?
Yeah, sounds good.
Okay. So then, moving down to C2, it's basically the same.
Oh, wait, mobile home parks are not necessarily, are they rented?
Oh.
Just say two are more mobile homes. Yeah.
Okay, so I know we're at 6:45, but I'm going to keep on reading what is allowed in each district. So, C2, everything, allowed in C1, including group home care, group homes or care facilities, gyms or physical fitness centers, schools or vocational training facilities, museums or public cultural facilities, rehabilitation centers, hospitals, clinics, paternal, religious, or recreational meeting facilities, minimum lot size, half acre. And so I have the same thing for C2 as C1, because it is similar in the minimum lot size.
Okay.
And if that's the case, I'll just move this first statement for what defines an RV park in C2 as well.
Sounds good.
Yay, nay?
Okay.
All right, C3 is where you're really allowed to do a lot. So it's all of things in C1, C2, including amusement or recreational facilities, golf courses, vehicle or automotive sales, building material supply, wholesale or retail, including outdoor storage, hotels, motels, lodging establishments, taverns, theaters, kennels, or animal shelters, veterinary offices, and recreational vehicle parks. So the second spot that we actually find it in our zoning code is C3. So friendly reminder, A2, or A3, and C3. So C3 has a lot more that I actually put into the chart, because it is, you're allowed to sell commercial storage, maintenance operations, construction or reconstruction on RVs.
Looks good.
And the minimum lot size is three quarters of an acre, point seven five. And so we also are allowing one per three quarter of an acre as a long-term residence, same as a mobile home. And then the question here is, how, at what point is it considered an RV park in C3? Is it the same? Two?
I think we should keep it the same, yeah.
Yeah, I do, too. I think this is going to be great, because this is going to say what we think we want to say until someone tears it apart at the public hearing.
Yeah. Which is very digestible.
Yeah.
Yeah, Luanne has a question.
Yeah, my question is, on the one per three-quarter acre for residential, I think you changed that when we allowed residential in commercial. I don't think there was a, a three-quarter acre requirement in that, that amendment. So just check it. I'm not, I can't remember for sure, but I don't believe there was any requirement.
No, there's, there's, the, in the, in our existing code, commercial C3 district is minimum lot size, three-quarter acre. Is that what you're asking? It exists right here.
Okay, so, so any lot in commercial has to be three-quarter acre. It's not necessarily where you can put a resident. So, okay, that makes sense.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep, cool. Thanks for checking that. Yeah, this is the amended version from October 4th, 2022, that I'm referencing.
Right.
All right, moving down to residential, ba, 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 ba. So RVs, one per acre, kind of the same statement we've had, except I changed with a valid permit approved prior to 12/31/21, because that was when the short-term rental ordinance lists the cutoff for getting your STR permit. And so I just have it as one. We can change that, how many we want to allow as a per long-term residence, satellite bedroom rental, short-term rental with valid permit. And that's the same for mobile home. And then, maximum for, so this is RV park, maximum for RV or THO per acre, minimum lot size, one-half of an acre. Because that is the minimum lot size of recreational. And so, Marsha and I, of course, had quite a bit of conversation about this.
Okay.
Because contemplating driveways and people parking their RVs any hour of the night, is it, is any rentable space considered an RV park in residential, the space in which an RV is not provided? So what I was saying there is, Marsha and I were drawing this picture of you have an RV park in your yard, and people are driving in all hours of the night, parking their RV, and, or all hours of the day, there's people coming in, going out. And do you want to have that much traffic on our, in our residential areas? Because that does really open up a lot more traffic, just in our, in, on our residential streets, that maybe people aren't as good at driving their RVs on, and it just brings up a lot of questions of what we want. And this is definitely something for public comment, but also your comment.
If I could just continue for one second, that thought is that you, we do have RV parks in residential areas. We do have them, and we probably can and should with regard to, people like to live in sort of, you know, neighborhoods, if you will, and, and even camp in neighborhoods. The, the problem just becomes determining that that's a park when it is as just described by Malia. So we need help with how you say that, and when you say it.
We can just let it sit as it is. Something to ponder. This isn't totally, totally done. It could be something that in the presentation, as we're opening up this for public comment, saying, please comment on how many you want an RV parked, how many RVs you want it to be considered an RV park specifically in residential, and if you want it or not. Let that be a question for the public. Personally, I think we shouldn't, but I am not the only person in this town or in this commission. And so we've gone, oh, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I would lean towards agreeing with you, Malia, too, and I also, but I also think that maybe for the sake of getting, like, I like. for the sake of getting, like, I like requesting comment on it because it does. It seems like this could be something that people would have real opinions on. And that it might, we might get some useful feedback for, from public comment.
Well, I wonder if, if some of our commission is leaning against allowing new RV parks in residential areas, and I know the commission or the town council was in our joint session. I wonder if we just say none in this one and get feedback on that? If that's. The direction we're heading. I don't know that I.
You could do it that way because that would probably spark more.
Yeah, right.
It would probably spark more. Informed comments. I don't, I don't want people just raising their hand and go, oh, two, oh, four, you know, I want.
Yeah.
Some feedback of they really want them. So if you put none there, then people go, wait a minute, wait a minute.
That's a good point.
Yeah. Is Coral Sands i- in a commercial zone or in residential zone?
Um, I can check the map. I know that, I, I believe we checked and. Nancy's Place is in residential. I mean, I, I think of like Nancy's Place, you turn off the highway and it's down the block where residential is. Even Coral Sands is down the block where residential is. Cadillac is, is highway facing, so we don't think of that as, you know, a residential neighborhood. So.
They were both zone commercial.
Oh, good. Okay. Okay, that's good. Because I, I, I didn't want it to be, look like, look like we were targeting those. So that's.
Right, right.
Yeah, good question. Um, and so in residential, mobile home park, maximum for mobile homes per acre. The minimum lot size is a half an acre. That's just following our zoning code, and I believe there is not a density requirement for that one either. So that one is also something that people can say. Yay or nay on four for mobile homes to be considered a mobile home park. However, that should probably be two, because you can only have one each. Oh, that's maximum. Oh, I don't know. Oh, gosh. Because then that puts a, like, what happens between, on numbers two and three?
Yeah, I would say two. Two or more is considered a mobile home park.
We want to have a maximum for density. That's what we were doing. We were creating our density in residential, saying you can only have four per acre. On that minimum lot size. Half acre.
Although, although if you think about it, when you design a mobile home park, you actually design for maximum density, not small. You're, you're telling people they can have four, max of four per acre. That's a quarter acre per mobile home, and I think that's too. I think it should be more. I think you should be able to say like six on an acre because.
Yeah.
Home parks are designed for smaller spacing.
I think that's good. We got that feedback from the town council at that joint session.
Sweet.
And, and I'm sorry if I said it otherwise, Malia, earlier, by the time you and I got this far, we were just, you know, overwhelmed.
You, well, you all did excellent work, so thank you. And I hope folks don't mind us staying late today, but I think this is important.
Yeah, this, you know.
Ooh.
Well, septic approval is down in the standards anyway.
It is.
Oh, I'm pretty sure, didn't we say all, you and I went through to make sure it said utilities and septic in a couple places?
Yes, mobile home park. Foundation and access to utility connections. And then we also have.
Standards for the parks include. Safety codes, health, land, keep going. That's non-conforming.
Oh, that's.
There it is.
But that's just for a launderette. Okay, yes, great catch, Luann.
There it is. All storage and solid waste receptacles. But look at, what does B say?
All storage and solid non-septic receptacles outside of the confines of any RV space.
That's, yeah, no, that's different.
Like trash. So we should add a.
How about C? Could we add it to C? All utility connections and septic, and septic waste systems. What, what did you call them? Septic systems? What did you call them above? In our definitions, we fixed that.
I called it.
Oh, no, they, oh, no, they did it in the.
In the subdivision?
In the subdivision one, they did it, but let's go up to what we call our septic system.
Sorry, close your eyes.
No, you're good. You're good. Septic.
Drainage system incorporating a septic tank.
So septic system is fine then because we defined it above. As long as we defined it, you can say you must meet, there we go. All utility connections and septic systems must meet health and safety codes. There we go.
Okay, so real quick, going down to factory F1. This one, we are not allowing any living in because it doesn't say in our zoning code that anyone can live in it, but we are saying that you can sell commercial, storage, maintenance operations, construction, or reconstruction of RVs. Just as you can in C3. And then no mobile home, no, no RV park, no mobile home park.
Nice. Be redundant, but going back to residential mobile home parks, the last column, I just, yeah, I added pending septic approval.
Yeah. I like that.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Even, well, okay.
So after reading that, I have gone through and. Erased quite a bit of our standards applicable to A2 and A3 in residential, because that was the point of our chart of this table, was to actually kind of remove this section as well as our standards applicable to commercial zones. And so I just went through with, in the suggesting mode, in case you guys saw any of this that you were like, ooh, let's actually make sure that that part is mentioned in there. And so there's a nice green line through it, so you can read it really easily.
Well, this is, this is one place where it does say one RV is permitted on a commercial lot as living quarters for employees working on site. It must, but we've said now that you can live there. Never mind, never mind.
Right, so.
I, I say, yeah, I say you can get rid of it all because we put it in the chart.
I agree, at least for that one. And then moving up, I removed a lot of A2 and 3, A2 and A3 must be long-term restored. Blah, 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 blah. The only ones that we hadn't addressed is private driveways may host occupied RVs or thousands of property owners' permission on a temporary use basis. And unoccupied RVs may be parked on the private parcel of land not to exceed two per acre. And I just moved those up here to applicable to all zones because those do fit in with.
Yes.
If it's a residential, then it's gonna be, you're gonna be allowed to be in their driveway. Or if it's commercial and it's somebody's house, you are, you should be allowed to be in their driveway. Because that's, we're not terrible people here.
Yeah.
Uh, and then I did. Ask about the maximum of two, where is this? Okay, different per zone on how many units. So unoccupied recreational vehicles may be parked on a private parcel of land. And then this is where we're creating density, not to exceed density maximum two per acre. Do we want to create our density for that? On all zones, you can only have two unoccupied RVs on any zone. Per acre.
Yeah, I kind of like that because what you're saying is you can't build up a, a back lot of RVs. That's, I think that was what we were trying to get to. You, you can't just, oh, my friend doesn't use his anymore. I'm parking it out back. Oh, I have an old one. I'll park out back. So I don't know what kind of, I, I think we were going that way. I don't know how we were gonna get there. That's, I think, where we left it. But I think you can definitely take off now the ones you've crossed off below because we've certainly put them into the other places.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. Doesn't apply there.
Okay, non, yeah. So I wanted to talk, do you want me to do non-conforming for a minute? Okay, so non-conforming, that we, we've written, talked about and rewritten many times what we were trying to do. And I, I got, I read it again and realized that. I don't, I, I wanted to say. RVs and thousands placed prior to the adoption of this ordinance are non-conforming and shall be, and shall be moved after timely notice from the town. Okay, so what, what, this is one idea. Part one is if it's been there, if, if these RVs have been there since before the ordinance, they're non-conforming and they shall be removed if they are RVs and thousands parked or stored in any right-of-way and RVs and thousands parked or stored adjacent to buildings. So what we're saying is that's one way to look at it. Then the word becomes, or a non-conforming RV or thou shall immediately lose its legally non-conforming status if, and this is where we put if it changes ownership, if it's moved or fixed or changed and it's relocated. So my, what I caught here was the difference that we've all been discussing. Should it be taken away immediately after the town sends notice? Or should it stay there until moved, changed, or adjusted in any way? And so I caught that we really didn't give the and, the either/or to be decided by public input and the town, the town's final. In other words, we got stuck as a commission in our discussion of the two ways. One is it had to move, or the other was it would move later when, you know, when it's, someone else moves it or someone sells it or whatever. So. I believe that that either/or discussion is what we're looking for in town comment and, and in public hearing and town approval. Does that make sense? Do, do you see where I caught that?
Yeah, I like that. That makes a lot of sense to have those. I like presenting them as the different options as well. And so would, would we leave that in for public comment with the or?
Yeah.
And then pointed out as saying like, these are the two ideas we have, please.
Exactly.
Provide us insight.
Yeah, and that's, and Luann's asking a question that I'll get to in one second. I, because I, I understand your question and I'm not sure. I just wanted it to be, the idea is we have a challenge before us of, is it something we're trying to get rid of upon acceptance of the ordinance? Or is it something that we're allowing to stay until it changes hands and moves? So then. Luann just said, RVs and thousands parked or stored adjacent to buildings. And her question was, is that a problem? The times that it's a problem, I believe that we're referring to are places where it's been pushed up against something to be what might be out of the way, but is actually in the right-of-way or storage area of a place. And so I'm not sure, Luann, quite how to say that, but it's. I, I guess we just leave it there till we figure out the correct wording. And then Amanda, go ahead. Maybe you can.
Okay, yeah, I'd kind of like us to look at. To do both from, to present both at the plan, at the public hearing. Because we heard very clearly from us and town council that if you have a RV parked in the right-of-way, you gotta move it. So I think we should say now. An RV or thou parked in the right-of-way shall be removed with timely notice. Then I think we should consider offering this illegally non-conforming RV shall immediately lose its legal non-conforming status if. I don't think it's an either-or situation. I think we could delete what I have highlighted potentially and just say, move it if it's in the right-of-way. And then. Other things, here's how they, here's how their legally non-conforming status changes.
Yeah, I like that. That might be the answer, Amanda. Is, is that we're taking the ones that were causing the challenge in the first place and saying those will be moved, but if you have one on your property that's, doesn't conform, you can leave it out of the way until it's moved or, or, yeah, okay, that's better. That's better. Maybe that answers it for all of us. Maybe that's what will come of the public discussion is, so you're right, you can take out what you've.
Okay. Yeah, I also.
Do we need that anywhere? Addressed above, we don't need it anymore.
Right.
Because there's many non-conforming uses. And that's, those are two examples of non-conforming. Correct? I'm just thinking this through.
Wait, what do you, I'm sorry, Malia, what was the first part of your question? Which are you trying to get rid of?
Is parked or stored adjacent to buildings. I'm just making sure we don't also need to have that up here with Amanda's comment.
Well, when I was trying to, when I was trying to answer Luann, when she asked what that is, I, I kind of agree that we, that's, I know, I can picture in my mind what it means, but I don't know if it's up to us that it's a problem unless it is in the right-of-way.
Yeah.
I agree. I think we don't need it.
Okay. Okay. Okay, you can take, you can take mine, you can take mine away because.
Okay.
We're, we're cleaning that up. So let's read it again. Non-conforming uses. RVs and thousands in place prior to the adoption of this ordinance are legally. If, okay. If an RV are legally non-conforming if they are RVs and thousands parked or stored in the right-of-way. And they shall be noticed. Wait a minute. Now, this is getting, hold on, we're, we're really close, but it's just the language. Non-conforming use, a not, a, I know what it is. Non-conforming use, colon, an RV or thou is non, in place prior to the adoption of this ordinance is non-conforming if A.
We're back to our previous.
If A, a rider, an RV and thou is, if parked in the, if parked or stored on any right-of-way.
I don't think we need to do that.
Okay, I'm not getting this right.
We already had A and B and just erased them.
Yeah, I think we just, like, we don't need to, we don't need to write out what is non-conforming because people, but you read in the ordinance can, can determine if they have a non-conforming.
Okay, okay.
I think we should say RVs and thousands. If part, we should not say RVs and thousands are legally non-conforming if parked in the.
Right, no.
Because that indicates they can stay. We're saying.
Right, no. Oh, I agree. That's, that's where I wanted, I want that out. But, okay, do that again. An RV and thou in place prior to the adoption of this ordinance. A, RVs and thousands that are parked or stored in any right-of-way shall be. RVs and thousands that are parked. Or stored in any right-of-way shall be moved after timely notice from town. I'm talking about the one where they send out a letter and say you have sixty days to move it or, you know, whatever they determine. So that's, okay. Then next, B, illegally non, it's not a legal, it's illegally. A. Non-conforming RV or thou shall immediately lose its legal non-conform, its, its non-conforming status. And be moved if the property, yeah. The property, yeah. There you go.
Okay, so a couple of just grammatical questions here. Is that in or on any right of way?
I think in.
In.
And. Does this sentence make sense? Nonconforming use, an RV and or thou in place prior to the adoption of this ordinance. Is nonconforming?
No, what is, what does it say in our RV, in our zoning code? It's like a nonconforming use is. Thing in place prior to the.
Right. But. But what we're, what we're doing now is that we have the answer.
A nonconforming use is defined to mean a use of land that does not conform to current land use regulations that legally existed before the. Enactment of the applicable regulations which has been continuously maintained. A nonconforming use may continue indefinitely so long as it is not abandoned. The term abandoned.
But that's, and that's not what we're saying, what we want to say here that we might just all have agreed on. Is that a nonconforming use? Of an RV or thou. Are these different things? And if they are the different things, there are different solutions. And that may well have settled this difference we have of of taking them all out. So. What we're saying is an RV or thou in the right of way, which is one of the ones that we sort of all agreed, or most of us, not all of us. That it should be moved, that one has to happen. And then the next one is if it's nonconforming, but it's out of the. Right of way and it's on your. Your, like it's laying on your property somewhere, then it has to move or change. When it's sold or changed in any way. So I don't. RVs and thousands that are parked or stored in any.
How does that look?
Okay, use. Use for an RV in place to the. Prior to the other. RVs and thousands that are parked or stored in any right of way and shall be, shall be moved. You don't need the word and. RVs and thousands that are parked or stored in any right of way shall be, shall be. Moved after timely notice from town. A nonconforming RV though shall immediately lose its legal nonconform. It's legal, nonconforming status. If, and then the property's changed ownership, the RV's altered structurally. In other words, if you go to do anything but. Make it legal, it goes. Yeah.
Yeah.
You can make it legal. You could say, oh, you know, that one's been sitting out behind my house and it's dead, but. I'm fixing it up this month and making it legal, moving it into the setback or whatever. So you could. Okay, nonconforming use of an RV or thou in place prior to the option, adoption of this ordinance. Yeah, that's better.
Yeah. Okay, I think we're good to.
Yeah, good luck, move on. Yep, yep.
Work. I just made a quick statement here. Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, no, you're good.
Um, I just was saying we should probably delete this because we're saying. The standards for recreational vehicle parks and mobile homes and then recreational vehicle park, or RV park standards apply and in addition.
Yeah. I think that's.
And repetitive too.
And I think that's, oh, okay. Chris, finish that section. That's all of our comments.
Brian has, Brian gets the kudos for the best emojis.
Yeah, I'm feeling very emoji like right now.
Awesome.
Most emotion I can muster.
That's fair.
So.
Thank you everyone for your help. That was.
Yeah.
It takes the village.
Thank you guys for hammering us. The table is awesome too. It's so much more clear. Table queen.
It's up in our minds too.
Yep. Okay, back.
So what do we? Do we need a motion? To.
Yes, go Brian.
Oh boy, let's see if I can, my brain is a swamp. Uh, motion to approve the draft RV ordinances. We've edited it. For public comment, is this the?
I second.
Presentation at public comment.
I second it. That's exactly right. Thanks, Brian.
Motion by Brian, second by Marsha. Any comments or discussion?
Just send it to comment.
Great. Thanks, Ed. Agreed. Okay, I will call the motion. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Okay, motion passed unanimously. Thanks, everybody. Um, woo, okay, thanks for staying late too. So let's, I will get that posted and work on the. Salem Record posting tomorrow. Let's move on to new business on the agenda. Item four, we have no land use clearance applications. So then moving on to item five is interviews of Commissioner applicants. And so. We will go, we'll start first with Marsha Hayden felt. Then Ed Dobson, and then as you all have seen in your email, Jacob Nelson has withdrawn his application. So we have sent the interview questions around and I've assigned Malia, Brian and I the different questions. Ed, I'll ask you to refrain from comment during Marsha's interview and then I'll ask Marsha to refrain from comment during your interview. So thanks.
It's okay for me to listen in?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, I went in order in which the applications were received. So that was the order of on here. So. Marsha, you ready for us to get going?
Sure.
Oh no, did I not open my?
I can share it if you'd like.
Sure. Alrighty. Oh, so. Thank you, Marsha, for reapplying to be a commissioner. Our first, and we ask that you spend no more than two minutes on each question. Our first question for you is please tell us why you're qualified for the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Um, I would have to say many years of experience is from years. My past life in Colorado through to this life here, including San Juan County, uh, planning and zoning as chair for ten years. And the past four years here in town. And I would express the idea that experience doesn't always make it right. Um, experience just hopefully gives me the. Sense to stop and learn whatever's happening that's new. So I think I can do this. And yes, I think I can.
Thank you.
What are one to three issues you would work to address? If you were to stay on the Planning and Zoning Commission?
Um, thank you, Malia. I believe that I don't have any specific agendas to bring forward because. What I've most appreciated about this assignment and what's going on is that the town is building itself as new. And the things that come up are sort of normal in the experience of growing a town. So I appreciate being able to contribute to whatever's on the table. I would say the only one we have that we all seem to be concerned with, but I'll express my own is to. Update enforcement of all of our ordinances so that the entire town is feeling the same. Enforcement, the same sense of what these ordinances do for the town.
Thank you.
What town values are important to you that the Planning and Zoning Commission work to protect?
Um, this one took me a minute. Uh, because I don't think a town has values. I think it's the people in the town. And we've got an interesting mix of town in terms of the old. Not by, not by age, but the longer term residents of this town and this sort of wonderful new. New. Population coming to town. And so I think what. What we do here is to say. We vote, we vote for the values of what we think is right for the people who live here. Um, and that means, yes, definitely keeping the small town atmosphere that people came here for. However, recognizing that there will be change, so we better be ready for change. And that to me is not only zoning, but the planning part. So I I would say the values are to plan for what the people want.
Thanks.
Okay, um, next, Marsha, can you tell us of a time that you helped resolve a conflict in a work or professional environment?
Yes, I I I can't. I didn't come up with a specific answer of some incident. I I think it reflects a little bit on what I just said about how to. Get values and that is to respect everything thrown at us. So that we are in a position to take all the opinions we can take. And if we agree or disagree, learn from those other opinions. Um, and then the way to resolve it by being on planning and zoning is to vote. So if you vote to resolve the issue by saying, no, I don't like the idea, I'll vote no on that, then you've expressed. A a way to overcome challenge. Um, I I will. Absolutely admit that a little, being a little older and a little crankier, um, I want to stick by my opinions. But I always have felt that I'm pretty good about listening to all sides of it and changing my opinions. I think I voted differently on. The sign issue than I thought I would or I, you know, so I I don't know that it's necessarily conflict so much as. Uh, opinions and challenging opinions and values and then voting for them.
Thank you.
This is a voluntary position that requires one to four hours a week of your volunteer time. Can you meet this commitment?
Uh, sure, I'm retired, so I get to do this when I want to. I spent almost all day between balloons and planning and zoning. That was my day at my desk. Um, so I'm fortunate to have some time that I can do this. I also am retired, so I might try not to be here every day of my life and be out playing more. Um, so what I do appreciate is the new world in which we can meet like this. From hotel rooms in Moab or wherever we are.
Great. Uh, this position requires checking email regularly and working in Google Docs and Microsoft Word on a weekly basis. Can you tell us about a project you have completed on a computer?
Um, I actually last year remembering or last time remember answering this as completing a. A slideshow for Amanda's or a PowerPoint for Amanda's birthday party, but I can't use that again. So instead, I would just say to you that I believe I'm pretty close to caught up with all of the. Networking, et cetera, that we do in our meetings. I'm I'm much better at Google Docs and I'm much better at. Almost presenting as long as Malia is talking or Brian are talking in my ear. I feel like I'm caught up and I can help on most of the projects we work on in our documents, et cetera.
Great. And then, um, last question, are you a bona fide resident of Bluff, meaning this is your principal place of residence?
Twenty-eight years and counting. I ain't got no place else to go. This is it.
Great. All right. Thank you, Marsha. Thank you for your your time and your answers today.
Thank you.
Thank you guys for considering me.
Of course. Okay, uh, Mr. Ed Dobson, you are up next. Are you ready to go?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, great. So first question, um, please tell us why you are qualified for the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Well, please forgive if I sound like a retired lawyer. The qualifications can be said to be found listed as the musts and the regularities under P and Z's requirements. And. I think I'm in there.
Okay, thank you.
What are one to three issues you would work to address if you were to stay on the Planning and Zoning Commission?
Well, I remain committed to commissioners' responsibilities as set forth in those requirements. I really don't have anything new to bring as far as a personal interest.
Thank you.
What town values are important to you that the Planning and Zoning Commission work to protect?
Well, general plan itself runs forty-two pages and then you got strategic plan, ordinances, resolutions, these all. All guide us. And planning and zoning acts at a point in time. We have to be ready to embrace the entirety of the town values when we act. I want to be there.
Great, thanks.
Okay, Ed, um, can you tell us about a time when you helped resolve a conflict in a work or professional environment?
Well, uh, I drafted a voter initiative to prevent disposal of large quantity radioactive waste in Montana. Led the campaign to qualify and pass the initiative, then led the lobby campaign to convince the legislature not to repeal it. And all that was in the world before the internet. Otherwise, I would have saved this for question six.
Nice, thank you.
And this is a voluntary position that requires one to four hours a week of your volunteer time. Can you meet this commitment?
Well. Struggling along for four years, I think I can.
Great. This position requires checking email regularly and working in Google Docs and Microsoft Word on a weekly basis. Can you tell us about a project you have completed on a computer?
Uh, do my taxes qualify? Never mind. Uh, how about an analysis of why members of the Navajo Bar Association should be allowed to represent Navajo taxpayers before the IRS? I could send that out if you'd like to look at it.
And that, that was something you typed up?
Yep.
Okay, great.
Did all the research, put it all together.
Thanks. Okay, so then last question, are you a bona fide resident of Bluff, meaning this is your principal place of residence?
Yes, I am.
Wonderful. Okay. Thank you, Ed, so much. Thank you, Marsha. So, um, next steps for this process. Um, we're, we'll call a a vote at our next meeting on, um, I think it's November.
Eleventh, eighteenth?
Twentieth, twentieth. And we will vote to recommend, make a recommendation to Town Council and then they will. Um, finalize the commissioner's spots at their December, I believe it's December fourth meeting. So that's our next. That's the order of operations. Any questions there? Okay.
Sounds great. Thank you, applicants.
Yeah, thank you so much. Okay, um, schedule of meetings for twenty twenty-five. I apologize, I was supposed to check in with Brian about this. Um, but we, Brian, we were discussing in our last meeting. Considering going to, um, one regular meeting a month. And one work session a month, so two meetings a month, but one is a work session, one is a regular meeting. This is based on the idea, based on. The fact that we don't tend to have a lot of applications and so we don't see the need to meet. Uh, more than once a month for formal approvals, but we do see a need to have more work sessions generally. Uh, we were just wondering like what, if we wanted to change the date or time to be more accommodating for people's needs. I apologize, folks, what what did we discuss? What? What proposal did we have at the last meeting?
Well, go ahead, Malia. You go.
I think we were just waiting to hear from Brian on what his work schedule was because most of us, I can only speak for myself. I also have a pretty flexible work. At least evenings.
Yeah, I mean, I don't foresee any change at the moment to my work schedule. For next year, I think Monday through Wednesdays will still be my. My plan is for that to continue to be my schedule. So I would say that. You know, Wednesdays, there's two RNs in the building, so if it needed to be on one of my workdays, that would. Still be the best day and then Thursday, Friday. Still be the best day and then Thursday, Fridays, I'm always. I'm generally speaking, uh, have the whole days off. So no real changes on my end, so whatever works.
Would it be better, Brian, if you had, if we said our meetings were on Thursday nights? And then you just wouldn't have to worry about.
Yeah, I mean, it would certainly remove that variable of, I mean, I was pretty, I've been pretty impressed with. Only one or two nights now. I think things actually ending up being chaotic enough to not allow me to be there, but I mean, Thursdays would definitely eliminate. That variable altogether.
I'd like to check with town council and the calendar, but I, I would like us to consider moving to Thursdays. Um, to avoid that conflict for you, Brian. I also, I have a, a standing work call Wednesdays that I miss every. Every Wednesday, so it also would be good for me. Um, so if, so, um.
That's great.
Leah and potential other. Uh. Reinstated commissioners, not reinstated, but. Does Thursdays generally work for, for you all?
Since I, since I learned how to use the DVR in my television set, I can see. Television I want, so I'm happy with, with accommodating the working people. And being the one who doesn't have a schedule. So Thursdays are great.
Modern life is so great.
Thursdays great for me too.
Okay, wonderful.
Works for me.
Okay, thanks, Ed. So I will, oh, Brian, go ahead.
I didn't mean to press that button, sorry.
He was trying to do more emojis.
I know, that was exactly what happened.
I will try to, um, confirm that ASAP, so, okay. Um, item seven, I. Is items for the next agenda. Um. We will have, um. Review of. Of comments from the public hearing. We will have a vote on commissioners. Anything else that we want to make sure is on that?
So, yeah, after review of comments from the, for the two. It's two ordinances, right? The subdivision and, and the. P and Z, I mean, RV, PC, RV. And if we listen at public hearings and have comments, do you think we'll be able to approve them that night? To send on to, to town council? Just, just putting it on there in case we are ready? Cause I think of the subdivision ordinances, if there's a few words to change, there wouldn't be much because it's written by the state law.
Yeah. We can put discussion and vote, but we may not be ready to vote on the RV ordinance would be my guess. We'll see.
Okay.
Did you want to add the, um, conversation about? The schedule for next year to next meeting too? Did you already say that?
Sure, I'll put, confirm.
You don't have to, we don't have to.
No, but if she's talking, you're right, Brian, Amanda was going to talk to the town. And we could approve it, yeah.
Okay. Okay, we can leave it at that for now. All right, last item, other, do we have any other issues to bring up tonight?
We have a lot of issues, but they don't have to do with planning and zoning.
All right, motion to adjourn.
I second.
Any discussion?
No, no.
All in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Longest meeting ever.
Yeah. Meeting adjourned at seven thirty-seven. Thanks, everybody.
I know.
Have a good night.
Yes, be well, everybody.
Brian needs a nap.
Oh, God, I know, I do. All right, see you later.